Hey everybody, this is Walt Blackman and welcome to another segment of America First Brothers. I was gone last week and my brother man right here Dave, he had to hold it down. He took it over and it was a great show. Make sure that you go back and check it in before we go on, make sure you click that like link in the subscribe, subscribe button. And the more people we get to subscribe to our channel, the better off we can get the word out. So what's going on Dave, what's happening man? You feel, you feel good today?
Feeling good, you know, feeling good now, you know, trying to keep tracked right now. You yourself know, you know, we're getting ready, we're going through this redistricting right now. And the maps are being redone and everything and it's crazy, you know? It's crazy how everything is changing like District six is turning to District seven.
Yep.
And it's a lot bigger and it's a lot longer.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's a bigger district. Uh, so that's gonna, we're gonna be talking about that in another show about the redistricting. Um, we know that's, that's a big topic in Arizona, but today what I want to talk to you about Dave is the school boards.
Yes.
So a lot of times people will ask me, well, you know, I want to run for office. I want to get involved. What should I do? You know, first of all, I, I had one person come to me, said, I want to get involved and I want to get in office. And he says, what do you think about me running for president? I said, of what? So start, start at your level. Uh, so school board is, I, I say school board is the most important because, because that's, that's where the rubber meets the road. That's where our kids are all day. That's where the majority of property taxes go when we're paying uh, these, these crazy taxes. It's going to school boards and it's going to fund our schools K through 12. So talk to me about what your feeling is about the school board. Uh, and this, this is kind, this is an open deal because we know the school board can get buck wild and they just talk about anything. And then we can just kind of go into mass mandates with some of these folks talking about.
Well, it's not, you know, you said it's one of the most important. It is one of the most important because it deals with our children and it deals with our grandchildren. And right now, what we're seeing is the left progressive trying to push their ideology down the throats of our children and grandchildren. And the uh, school um, unions, NE, NEA and other unions that are involved, NEA is the largest school union.
Yeah.
And uh, they're, they're forcing the government. Matter of fact, they wrote a letter to Biden and now they have elicited the uh, Department of Justice to uh, deem that parents are now domestic terrorists. If you're outspoken and if you're just outspoken at a um, board meeting.
They brought in the big boys.
They bringing in the big boys.
Department of Justice that is corrupt as corrupt can be.
Very corrupt.
Yeah.
Nazi Germany.
Nazi Germany and yeah, we're probably gonna get kicked off the air for that.
That's okay.
You know that's.
We'll be back in next week.
You know that's happening.
Cause it'll only be a week.
It'll only be a week, yeah, yeah, a week suspension.
It's the first offense.
Oh yeah, 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 we'll, we'll be good, uh, we'll be good not to do that. Hey, but so here's the deal, here's what I see what's happening a lot in Arizona. You know, you got the school boards, uh, parents are upset about the mask mandates in the school. You got, you got the school boards trying to implement a mask mandate, you know, in Arizona. Um, that the governor signed the bill last session that there were no mask mandates. However, the schools doing their own thing. They're doing their own thing and I can see they're doing that around the country. There's a school board in Texas and Ian's Independent School District in Austin, Texas is desperately trying to keep mask wars out of the schools. And the reason why they're trying to do that is because similar to what we were seeing here. Uh, kids are being separated in school, okay? Uh, parents aren't able to go to events like sporting events or extracurricular activity events because if they don't have a mask. Um, and then we've got the whole culture, council culture that won't put out the other side. The liberal left won't put out the other side of what's really going on with the mask mandates. And, and you know, we've talked about the Corona deal a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but that disdain is, this thing is far from over from what I'm seeing.
No, you're right, it is far from over. Uh, there was a surgeon and I don't have the article in front of me. There was a surgeon in, on the east coast that went to a school board. And he was actually explaining the, the caustic effects that the masks were having on our children. He was eventually terminated for speaking out against mask mandates at a school board meeting and he had grandchildren there.
You better shut up.
And he was terminated.
He was terminated.
He was terminated and he's, he's a surgeon and he's been in the medical field for over 20 years. You'd think he would know more than uh, the DOJ.
So he was terminated, he was terminated for having a mask on or for taking it, not having it.
No, terminated for speaking out against the mask mandate.
That's like, uh, isn't that somewhere, isn't that written somewhere in one of our amendments? Uh, the first? You better shut up, I else.
Yeah. Man. Again, he, he's a surgeon and he knows medical background.
Yeah, yeah.
He understands this and he's trying to explain it to the board and then his hospital terminates him for speaking out.
I'm concerned about the angry parents.
Oh.
The protests.
All those domestic terrorists.
Yeah, the domestic terrorists, yeah. Then, yeah, the Biden administration has made them domestic terrorists because parents are refusing to put masks on their kids. There was a story, um, uh, probably, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Um, there is, there was a young, there was a young lady, um, and uh, she had Down syndrome and she was going to a special uh, education course. And um, or unique uh, education course. And uh, the school district or the teachers were putting, were forcing the mask on the kid. However, uh, the kid kept taking it off. So what they did is use wires where they would put the hooks and put it to her ears and then so she couldn't take it off. Problem is, is that she went home one day and they forgot to take it off before she went home and then the parents found out. Um, and that's just one, one case.
Oh no, no, there's another case of duct tape.
Duct tape?
They duct taped a mask on a child because the child kept taking it off. Duct taped it on him.
Oh, hell no. Are you serious?
I'd be going to jail if it was one of my grandchildren.
How did the parents find, I mean, did they, they forgot the duct tape?
No, the marks on the, the child's face.
That's abuse.
Yes, it is abuse, but nothing happened?
Nothing happened.
Nothing happened because, because it is a mandate that they must wear a mask no matter what.
See that, they got the right one that, what does Cedric, any entertainer say? I wish somebody would sit in my seat. I wish somebody would do that to one of my kids. Mask, put up, they duct taped the mask to the kid. So that means that kid had that thing on all day.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, and probably restricted breathing, okay? So when, when the kid had to eat lunch, what'd they do? Unmask it, unduct tape it and then put a new.
Wait, what, unduct tape it, you mean rip it off?
Oh man.
Rip it off?
See, and see, and you don't hear about that stuff.
No, you don't.
But if there was, if it were a conservative who did that, if this was a conservative movement, it'd be all over the news.
Oh yeah.
You know, they'd be in jail, uh, you know, and it's, it's just crazy how that happened. In Nevada, in Nevada, law enforcement officers have been called to curb angry protest at school board meetings in that state. Also in Pennsylvania and in Colorado, we see these same types of protests that are going on in front of school and school boards. Now, these, see, see, I've heard people try to compare these protests to Antifa protests.
What, the, the summer of love protest?
The summer of love, when they took over Portland, you mean that one?
Oh yeah, Seattle.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not showing up and you know, and, and black helmets and baseball bats. You know, these are parents that are concerned about their kids because, because to the, of the examples we were talking about.
Yeah.
You know, duct taping mask to a kid, wiring the, the kid to the mask. I mean, it's just insane. And that's another reason and, and that in some of these school board meetings, parents are wanting cameras in the classrooms. What you thought about that?
No, I, I believe they should because this past year has, have shown us in schools, in classrooms that teachers overreach is, is, is um, is expanded. Because their overreach, they're doing things that is in violation of law. Duct taping, wiring.
Yeah.
Um, I saw one just recently, a teacher was chest bumping a girl because she wanted to leave class because she didn't want to hear about CRT. Chest bumping her.
What?
Yes.
See, see.
That's assault.
Oh yeah, but if you did that.
That's assault though.
Oh, it is assault. It is assault. But that, but you, you won't hear that in the liberal media, you won't hear that on the CNNs, you won't hear none of that.
No.
But if somebody on the right came out and did that, then they would be not only in jail, but under the prison. You know, with, with, with the foundation of the prison and that's, and that's, that's terrible. Out in California, and I'm reading this out from, from a journal, out in Cal, at a, at a California elementary school, a parent was banned from campus after attacking their principal and teacher over the mask mandate policy. That's how, that's how bad it's gotten. You got parents that have had enough, they're like, hey, you know what, you know, you ain't gonna mask with my kid like that. And then, but see what they're also doing too. And they're, and, and they're talking about these in some of the uh, the school board meetings is that they are separating these kids.
Yeah.
Okay?
Segregation?
Segregation, separate but equal.
Yeah.
You know, pretty soon, uh, you know, they got them in different classrooms, they got them, they got them over here, they got them over there, or what have you. And these kids are separated from their peers.
Where was that, I don't, I, I think it might've been in Massachusetts, you can correct me if you, if you can recall. But a teacher segregated her classroom from black and white.
What? They, she put them all, or they put.
White kids were in a separate classroom from the black kids.
Why was that? Did they just, uh, she was doing an experiment?
No, she wasn't doing an experiment, she explained it, but I have, I'll have to go back and find that article.
Yeah, there's no explanation for something like that. There's not.
No.
I mean, you, you're, I mean, and, 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 and that's, that's the whole narrative that they will do these things and, and, and fall behind up. It's educational, we're trying to teach CRT, we're trying to, we're trying to show what really happens in the real world with these, with these kids. And that's why they're pushing the CRT, that's why parents are upset at school boards. That's why we need, we need cameras in the classrooms. And I mean, that's something that, uh, I mean, we put, we put cameras in daycares.
Cameras in daycare?
And I'm not saying they're all babies in the high school, because you know, you've got some, you know, big kids in high school, K through 12. Um, however, there are all these things that are happening in the classrooms, but parents aren't able to see it. And if the kid doesn't say anything when they come home, the kid comes home, guess what? You'll never know, like those kids with the mask.
Well, you, you said just now, like the parents won't be able to see it. Remember when they were at home and they were on uh, Zoom during their classes?
Oh yeah.
And parents weren't even allowed to witness the, the teaching.
Yes, and some school boards prohibited the parents from watch, watching the teaching of their kids.
Yeah.
Some of the school boards in some of the more progressive states around the country. Now, how do you say, you, you know, you're, my kid is sitting at a computer at my house, which, you know, our, I mean, you've been to my house. Our computers are open, so you know, especially the one my daughter uses, so we can see what she's doing. I want to make sure she's doing her homework and not watching uh, Netflix or something like that. So, so you know, they're saying that parents, and this is in some schools, parents should not be able to see what the kid is learning in those schools. Why is that? Why, why wouldn't you want parents to know? Are they telling a different story when they come to PTA meetings?
No, it's a different story, you know, and agenda that they're teaching.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want you to witness the agenda because then you can go to school, file complaints, and then here we have hearings and all this, all over again. They don't want that. But then while they're watching your kid on Zoom, they look behind the kid and see a plastic toy gun and report it and get your kid suspended.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then CPS is at your house.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, but you know, but the, but the, but the liberal down the street who, who duct taped that kid, I mean, they're okay. Oh, don't worry about that, we've been to their house, they're fine, that's.
Yeah, yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't real duct taped.
But that plastic gone back there.
That duct tape was an aftermarket, it wasn't real duct tape.
It wasn't real duct tape. We did it, we did it lovingly. We did it lovingly, you know, and that's what they do. I mean, so when we're talking about numbers in the mask mandate right there, 69% support mask mandates, but I'm gonna break that down for you. So don't fall, fall out your chair when I say 69% supporting mask, mask mandate. 92% of those 69% are Democrats and 44 are Republicans. Imagine that.
Yeah.
Imagine that. Republicans believe in freedom, liberty and the, and the ability to be able to, uh, you know, uh, if your kid's in school, K through 12, to find out and, and mandate what your kids are doing. And it's just crazy that it's turned into so, it's, it's politicized now. It's, 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 you know, it's beyond the, the medical issues. It's, it's political. And if you wear a mask all day, you're gonna get sick. All day, every day. You, I mean, I can't even get, I was on an aircraft the other day, I'm not gonna say with airlines, and it was like a three hour flight. Man, we had to wear a mask. When you walk in the airport, you gotta have a mask on. And you, and you can't take it off until you're the other side and you're out of the airport. Almost passed out.
Same way as restaurants, a lot of restaurants still.
What about that one restaurant? What about that one restaurant you, I know we're kind of going off on a deep end, we're going into rabbit hole, but tell, tell the people about that one restaurant. Um, I think it's a, it's a popular restaurant that you can't, you, you, you won't get service if you don't have a card or you don't have a mask or something like, what is that?
Oh, um, well, that's, that's happening all over New York.
Oh, imagine that, New York.
Happening all over New York.
New York, New York, like the New York that had the skyrocketing with the COVID cases, that New York?
Yeah, and the nursing home issues.
Nursing home, yeah, yeah, that New York. Or you talking about the other New York?
There is no other.
There is no other New York, there's only one. So if you're a New Yorker, you watching this, oh man, you might want to move.
You know, and, and, and back to uh, the school boards, you know, I'm encouraged. Cause as I'm watching around the country, I'm watching parents finally retaking their rights. Taking back their rights. Uh, one of the things that really, uh, you know, bothered me the other night was, uh, what's the guy's name, McAuliffe from Virginia?
Wow.
Where he says that parents do not have a right.
Yeah.
To know what's being taught or to even uh, have any influence on what should be taught in schools.
He actually got out the building after he said that.
Oh yeah, he did.
See, you know, but see this, that's the deal. The left feels like the day they control your kids, okay? The school boards that are, that are dominated by some of the folks on the left feel like they, they control your kids and parents have no say in it. That's why these parents are getting upset. That's why you had that guy out in California that attacked, was gonna attack the principal because of that. And that's why we see all these protests in front of, in front of school board meetings because the school board, the, their, their, their system has created a, a, a organization to take over our kids. And that's, and they don't want parents involved in that.
Yeah.
They don't want us to have anything to do with that.
Well, even in Loudon too, you had that, that young man who uh, um, I can't remember transgender, um, he felt like he was a girl. And he wore a dress and he ends up raping a young girl.
Yes.
In, in the bathroom in Loudon.
Yes.
And, and the board, school board was aware of it, they concealed it, the father confronted them and yeah, he lost his mind. I would've lost my mind. And then he was tackled by law enforcement and arrested.
Yeah.
For causing a disturbance, not a threat, just causing a disturbance. Hello, my child was raped and you're denying it and you, but you know the truth.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, and we're, you know, we're seeing that too. I mean, this, this, I mean, 10 years ago, we wouldn't have been, we didn't even have these types of discussions.
No.
We really didn't.
No.
You know, but now we have the, we have the type of discussions, like you said, we've got, you know, and, and to each his own, you do what you want to do. You, you, you do what you want to do, but we've got that small percentage of people out there that are taking advantage of situations and that's one of them. And then we're, we're having, we have a gut, a totalitarian government in the school boards that are running our, our classrooms like a socialist project, experiment.
I, I think though, I think what's happening in our country, especially in the schools right now, the left has waken up, has awakened the sleeping beast.
The sleeping giant, yeah.
That beast is awake now. It's, the parents are no longer sheep, they're lions. And they were saying that 10 years ago at school board meetings, less than 20% of parents of the students there, their parents would come to a school board meeting.
Man.
Now they're coming in droves because now they're witnessing the transformation and the, and the indoctrination.
Yeah.
That these teachers are trying to change the ideology or the thought process of their kids.
Yeah.
Especially when it comes down to the black and white uh, scenario.
Yeah.
You know, white kids are oppressors and black kids are oppressed.
Yeah, so, so, but you, you know, some, we've got to look at both sides of this. I'd like to be the, the devil's advocate in this. You and I both have grown kids that have gone through K through 12. Um, so, so, so we didn't need, we didn't need a, a, a Facebook uh, show like ours to tell us to show up at the PTA meetings or to show up at the teacher council meeting.
Yeah.
Student, we didn't need that, we went. We went, you know, and we got involved. And I'm not saying this is, this applies to everybody, but however, if we want to, if we want to protect our kids in these schools, we've got to show up. You know? I, I mean, there have been many times that, that I've been to a parent teacher conferences and there are about two or three parents in there.
Yeah.
You know? And, and, and you're saying, you know, we're, yeah, there's 800 kids in this school, what the rest of it is, only two or three people in here? That doesn't make any sense. So, so this is, this is my humble advice to folks that are involved in these types of, these types of issues that want to protect our kids. The first step is being there as a parent at those student teacher meetings, because then you can get a good indication of what that teacher's doing. You know, you, cause that's your, that's your, that's your moment, you can drill down on some of this stuff.
Well, there used to be a time where as a parent, you were able to go into your child's classroom and sit and watch the teacher.
Oh yeah, not anymore.
Oh no, you're, no, it's off limits, you're trespassing.
Oh, not anymore, you can't go in there and.
You cannot witness the indoctrination process, the ideology that we're trying to, you know, we're trying to brainwash your children with.
You can't, you can't do that, you can't do that. Um, I was able to, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke at a school in our district and uh, the, the, the uh, I spoke at two of them, but this one I spoke at. Um, the instructor, the teacher, um, he's a social studies teacher, great, great teacher. Um, he, and he, and he happens to be, he happens to be a Democrat, okay? However, he doesn't indoctrinate kids. He teaches them history, you know, of, of, of the, of real history, you know, our real social uh, issues, our debate. Um, and I had an opportunity to sit in his class and I wish more teachers would, would, would be able to do that. Now, don't get mad if you're a teacher, you say I'm all, all teachers are, I'm not saying that, because you know somebody gonna say something.
Oh yeah.
Walt Blackman said all teachers are bad. I'm not saying that, okay? So just stop typing, stop, stop texting, okay? I'm not saying that. What I am saying is there are some teachers that don't need to be teachers that are there in the classrooms that have an agenda and they are pushing that agenda on our kids. And then we have the very small group of good ones, like the one I met a couple of weeks ago, that aren't getting that praise. You know, they're just, they're, they're going to work every day and they're trying to teach our kids and they're trying to keep the politics out of it.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and you're right though, you know, people will look at this and goes, well, they're, they're, we're bashing teachers. We're not bashing teachers. There is, there is a handful of teachers across this country that has swallowed, I mean, swallowed that poison pill.
Yeah.
Of Marxism.
Yeah.
And they're trying to indoctrinate our children. There's a small portion of educators. It's not the masses, because most teachers across this country are doing what I guess they're paid to do, what they were trained to do in college and what we as parents expect them to do. Teach our kids so that when they do leave school, that they would be um.
Better prepared.
Yeah, better prepared. And also uh, very uh, engaged in, in whatever, whatever their future holds for them. If it's gonna be in education, if it's gonna be the President of the United States, you're not gonna learn all this stuff by, by dumbing them down with Marxism.
No, you, you're not, you're not. So I talked earlier about the mask mandate law that was signed into law last year, last session. I'm just gonna read a clip for real quick. Arizona is one of the latest states to consider a permanent ban on mask mandates in public schools, K through 12. Charter schools, colleges and universities, lawmakers and governors. Um, and at least three other states, Texas, Iowa and Utah have passed similar legislation or signed executive orders that forbid school districts from uh, requiring uh, face coverings. But why, why, you know, if, if we're to the point where as a legislator body, we have to write a law to protect our kids from, from bad actors in these schools, sticking these masks on, on people and wrapping them up with duct tape. Uh, I mean, we're, we're, we're going off the cliff here.
Yeah.
I mean, we are going off the cliff. And what I would like to see, um, and you know, you're gonna be in office, you know, here in a, about a, about a year and a half from now. Uh, I'd like to see these teachers that do that sort of thing, like the, the, the duct tape, some criminal charges.
Yeah.
That, that needs to fall under the criminal code.
Charges and lose your life teaching life.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You've got no business in the classroom doing it. And then those people on the school boards that sanction this type of behavior, they need to be gone too. Needs to be some recall on them, you know?
Definitely.
Yeah, and you know, and that's, 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 that's uh, that's just how it is, so.
Well, here, let me, I have a question.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, okay? You're, you're one of our, you're one of the representatives in our state and in our district. There's a law passed that mask mandates are illegal.
Yeah.
For um, uh, state.
K through 12.
Well, state funded schools.
Yeah.
And offices.
Yeah.
But now we have teachers, we have unions that are pushing them to continue masking these kids. What can we do?
Well, the only thing we can, they're gonna take us to court and they've been doing that. Uh, for, well, the mask mandate bill went to the court and it was overturned. Uh, so they've gotten what they want. Uh, however, uh, it doesn't give them a green light to take over the rights of parents. Uh, but they've done that, they're gonna do that. What we can do as lawmakers is make these penalties stiffer. So what we didn't do last time when we wrote the mask mandate bill, um, we didn't, we didn't put any sort of criminal consequences. And if you violate, I mean, come on now, if you violate a law in Arizona, the statute, you're speeding. You're gonna get stopped by the police, consequence, you're gonna probably get a ticket, if it's criminal speeding, you may go to jail. Okay? That's a law, that's a law. We've written into law in Arizona, Arizona statute, the governor signed that mask mandates are prohibited in these types of school, K through 12, college, university, public schools, charter, and then some charter schools. So, so those teachers that, that violated, they should be sitting in jail, but we didn't do it right. We need to put some real consequences behind those measures and make sure that those people who violate that go to jail. And these, and then separating the kids.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I mean, I'm surprised that that hadn't come up in school boards. I don't know if it has or not, I mean, but I'm surprised it hadn't come up.
Yeah, I, I agree, there has to be some kind of deterrent put in place. Yeah, the school boards are telling them that we have millions of dollars, we will represent you in any court case and all that.
Yeah.
And you know, and my old saying is, well, let's spend their money, let's take them to court.
Let's, let's spend their money.
Yeah.
You know?
Let's take them to court.
But it, but see, I've, I've, I've talked about this, I've talked about this over and over and over. The Democrat funding machine, okay, is a machine that is unstoppable because they have so much money going into these different types of issues. From elections to school board meetings, to teachers being covered under, I mean, giving them a free legal advice or whatever, if they break a law. So all they're saying is, hey, I can break the law and I can abuse your kid and guess what? I have a lawyer pay, you know, the, the Democrats are gonna pay uh, for a lawyer for me to get out of jail, which is wrong. It's just wrong.
But again, they have all that money to do that, doesn't mean that they're gonna win the case every time.
No, no.
I, I believe that if you have a handful of cases, say, for instance, in Arizona, 10 teachers are penalized $1,500 for violating this and also maybe a um, community service, whatever. You're gonna start seeing teachers thinking different.
Yeah.
I can't afford $1,500.
Yeah.
I can't afford $5,000, I can't afford to go to jail, I have a family.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I also, I also believe that we need to, we need to, when we're talking about these type of issues, at the state level, we, we make, we make those mandates, protects everybody in the states. But local level is where it's at. So that's why I started out the program, we're talking about people need to, you know, running for office. Don't run for president of the United States if you never run for anything. But if you want, you, I want to be president of the United States. What have you done? Nothing. What have you run for? Nothing.
And there are people out there like that.
Well, yeah, well Biden, so I don't know. Well, he's been in office like 60 years or something.
He slept in office for 60 years.
What is that, what was that cartoon of the?
Rip Van Winkle, not, yeah, not Rip Van Winkle.
No. Yeah, that's, that's, that's his new nickname, Rumpelstiltskin. He's been asleep for 30 or so years, he woke up, I'm in the White House? What the? So. So, so, you know, it should be pushed down to the local level, but see, people gotta get involved. People can't sit on here, I mean, because I see a lot of the, a lot of the uh, the comments that come on our page. Um, and people like, oh yeah, we gotta do this and we gotta do that. And you'll say, and, and then you'll get the one, I'll die for my country to make sure our kids are safe. You say, oh, well, can you sign a petition? No, I can't do all that.
I don't want to put my name out there.
I don't want to put my name on nothing, you know what I'm saying? But I'll die for my country.
You know, I, again, I think they've awakened a sleeping giant, or I call it the beast, because you know, we need, I, I still believe we should fight fire with fire. We don't need to get violent, we don't need to get violent, nothing like that. And uh.
As he said, we don't need to get violent, he just flicked a fly off the desk and now the fly is somewhere in intensive care. Fly gonna die COVID.
But again, you know, fight fire with fire, you know, we, we can go out, there's things that we can do, we can go, we can, we can march on the Capitol if we have to talk to our representatives, we can go down to the school board.
Hold up, last time.
Except Walt, except Walt.
The last time, the last time Republicans did, they, they call it an insurrection, so we gotta be careful about that. Don't wanna do that, you know, so.
But, but like you said, going to the school boards, you can be boisterous all you want, just don't be violent.
Yeah, don't be violent, and if you have the facts when you're at the school board, and don't let your emotions lead with your facts and your data, your data. Then guess what? You will have an argument that will stand up against the liberal left's narrative. But all too often, we have people that lose their minds.
Screaming, yelling.
When they go into these school board meetings and then it's more of a show and you just, and you don't hear what they're saying, you're just watching the show. I mean, I've been in a, I've been in a few school board meetings and I'm like, holy smoke, I should have brought me some popcorn.
I've been in some church meetings like that.
Well, yeah, church, church, I'm going to church. But I mean, that's, I mean, but, but people have to get involved. So you get involved by either running for office, you get involved by following a candidate, you get involved by donating, but you can't sit there and complain.
If you're not gonna get involved.
If you're not gonna get involved. I get that all the time. I, 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 I read a post where, uh, somebody wrote, said, we need to do this about the schools. Oh no, no, he says, the schools are messed up and whatever. And I said, so what are some of your, what's some of your advice, recommendation? I ain't got nothing. Oh, okay. When's the last school board meeting to you? I don't go because, you know, I'm like, come on, man. Come on now, that, that's like you on the Titanic and it's sinking and you get on one of them rowboats. And they say, we gotta row to save our lives. No, I don't do no rowing, man. Come on now.
I'm just here for the ride.
I'm just, and that's what, you, you hit it.
I'm here for the ride.
I'm here for the ride. And, and look what, look what being just here for the ride, look what we got. We've got an, a failed administration, we got school boards that are out of control, we got CRT in the classrooms, we got comprehensive sex in the classrooms. Segregation in the classrooms because we've got a lot of people that just, I'm just going along for the ride and I'm gonna wait and see what happens.
It's time for, it's time for us all to get involved, really. It's time for us all to get involved. We can't just hide behind closed doors any longer. We can't sit there and, and think that we're gonna yell at our TV and they're gonna hear what our, our, our discouragement and our, 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 you know, just, just us being upset.
I'm gonna yell at the TV.
I'm gonna yell at the TV, I'm gonna shoot my TV, I'm gonna break, you know.
Well, every time Biden gets on there, I yell at the TV. I'm, I'm waiting for him. Well, you know, you know, when you're, you know, turning channels, what's, no, I got, okay, so I was watching YouTube the other, last night. And they've got this thing, Biden gaffes. Have you seen that? Oh my gosh. They got, they've got, it's like about thirty minutes worth of stuff that he has said over the past nine months that just make you just cringe. Uh, or just wanna throw your, your complete, your computer out of the window. So every once in a while, I'll see that. Um, and the, the, the deal is, is that we can't just, like you said, scream at the TV. We, you know, or get up and walk out and turn the TV off and then expect the next morning when you wake up that everything is fine. Because that's what we have done. And, you know, as Republicans and conservatives, we, we have a few, we have a lot of people to get out. They work hard and, and, and we know them, we run into them. I mean, uh, you know, however, if, if we're just sitting back on the sidelines, waiting for somebody else to do it, pretty soon, we're gonna get tired. Think about it. You, we're gonna get tired.
Looking around, where's everybody else?
Where's everybody else at? I mean, we can go to some, I can go to some meetings and they're talking about school board meetings and it's the same people in those conservative meetings. The same people in there every time, not getting any help, but then we got the waiting series on the sidelines, says, I'm not gonna get involved because I wanna wait and see what happens.
But again, I, I, again, I think I'm very encouraged though, to see the number of parents are getting involved with school boards. And it, and it's never too late. And, you know, and I give you all the praise because, you know, we need to be there. We need to hold the school boards accountable, we need to hold our teachers accountable, and we need to protect our children.
Yeah, and, and that's why it's important, and a lot of people don't think about this elected position in the, in the state of Arizona, it's the superintendent of public instruction. That is an important, that's an important, uh, uh, election, a statewide election position because I, first of all, I don't think it should be, I think it should be part of the governor's cabinet, however, it's not. But the people that we, uh, elect to go into those positions, particularly that position, they have to leave their politics at the door. Okay, just like school board members, they have to leave their politics at the door and vote for the best interest of those kids in their districts and, or the kids, the parents in the district. That's what they should be doing, but they don't do that. You can go down, I think it's in Tempe or Mesa, there's a school board down there. And I forget her name, but you, you walk down there and you, and you're a Republican or even look like a Republican, they'll shut you down. They will shut you. Mia, I think that's, not Mia Love, I'm thinking Mia Love's a Congresswoman, but it's another lady down there. And it's just, it's just insane, you know? So, so what do we do? Go eat a hamburger?
Get involved. That's what we do.
I'ma wait and see.
No, no wait and seeing, we need to get involved. You know, and you need to hold the board members, you need to hold their feet to the fire.
They hold our feet to fire, we're elected officials, we're gonna be elected officials.
Again, again, we work for you, they work for you. Okay, this is a republic. This is a republic. And so, they have, you, we have to remind them that we voted them in and we can vote them out.
Problem is, some people forget that when they're in office, so they, they, they're rogue and they do anything they wanna do. Um, and then we have uninformed, and I'm, I'm gonna say it, and you get mad, get mad. We have uninformed constituents because they don't get involved, they're uninformed. And then they, their head explodes when it's something that directly affects them. Okay, so you, you can't just get involved when it directly affects you. Okay, you need to get involved. I mean, we don't have kids in school, I mean, I got, I got a thirteen year old in school, in, in school, but you, you know, you have grandkids that are gonna be, gonna be in school. Even as grandparents, you know, and you've already put your kid through the public school, K through twelve, you still need to get involved. If we don't do this, then we're gonna continue to see a slide in our republic. When we're talking about schools, school boards are gonna become more, uh, just, just off the hinges. Uh, the Arizona school board, Arizona board, yeah, the Arizona school board, which governs all the school boards across the state, they tried to, to shove legislation through, uh, their board. Yes, and that was comprehensive sex education. They tried to shove that through. And that had to be something, had to be voted on the state. So when we have, at the, at the larger level, at the higher level, school board officials are doing that, and there was a good turnout because they got, they got shut down, what do you think they're doing when people don't show up? And that's when they're getting all this curriculum stuff in. They're getting all this other stuff in, so we just can't show up when it just affects us. We gotta show up when it affects all of us, um, as, as patriots and, and people who love this country.
Where we at, Mr. Beard?
I think he's asleep.
Alrighty.
Alright, so we, hey, what's happening? Was, okay, hey, everybody, so that concludes the end of this show right here. We talked about the school board. If you wanna go back and check it out and see what we were talking about, some of our other shows, I encourage you to do that. Again, don't forget to press the subscribe button on the America First Brothers on our YouTube channel. Also, go to our Facebook channel to check that out, join, follow us, and then you will be part of the solution and not the problem. You like that closing?
Yeah, that's good. I don't have nothing else to say now.
There was nothing, there was nothing there.
This is the first time he's done that.
There was nothing. Well, that's.
Oh, it's written here. Okay, never mind, I got it.
He kinda feels, he kinda feels like that lady on Fox who I schooled the other day.
Yeah, you did.
She was like, oh, oh.
She sounded like Biden. I support Biden. That's it.
Alright, everybody, have a great day. I'm Walt.
I'm Dave.
America First Brothers and we'll see you next time.
Bless you, God bless America. Are we on?
Are we on? Okay, you wanna start off?
You go ahead now.